To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
That's a repeat, a reaction, isn't it?
Well, a lot of people know their nature. It seems you're to ask for forgiveness. Like some good days, agendas or any time. For years written. Actual report seen before the five of the superintendent's committee. President Schultz. Member access. Minutes of the media committee. Approved. Twenty term health. And approved. The board approved the reported office. Four per July twenty five. Piece of shelter twenty five. A motion was to be by five. The biroster to approve the private plans. Widening through servicing on the opiate. From South Crawford. Hard road, south fifteen miles intersection. Highway thirty seven. Second in the biroster to improve activity. Trenches. Hyper here. Or now seventy eight. And at the CCCS building for twenty three. Dollar and nine. The board on the discussion. About opioid funding. Your center with name of the body. Kylie, project manager. Yeah, nope, we don't. All the other shells. I'm struck for one waters, but I.
Literally. Literally so.
There's kind of.
Big authority. Go down that way. Sure.
It's like your cellphone, them little ends get a little wobbly and then you put connectin'. I think maybe we need to do connectin', maybe.
You don't charge your over name.
Okay, she said perfect, so thank you.
Thank you for letting us know.
So I will start over. All right, is that what you wanted here?
Well, I just think that everybody likes to hear that.
Yeah, I'm gonna start with.
Summit is where we had our discussion with Kylie.
Is that where I was?
Yeah, yeah, Summit.
Okay, Kylie, project manager with Summit Carbon Solutions, gave the board some updates. In Crawford County, November tenth, there will be an open house in Dennison at Boulder's Conference Center from five to seven P M. Excuse me, on motion duly second forwarded. Jurned at eleven twenty eight A M. Agents for the next meeting are posted available at the courthouse on Friday four thirty P M. Proceeding to next meeting. Any correction or comments? Amendments will be approved.
Supervisor reports, Kyle.
It was a busy week, but not really so much with the county, so. Few correspondence with them. Staff on some roads, but. Pretty minor stuff. Supposed to have a, yes, center meeting last Friday, but due to the overwhelming number of farmers on that. Commission that got postponed on this, this Friday.
Harvest does seem to affect. Lot of.
How we do in Iowa.
I know, I know, I. I wanted to make a document, and I said, why during harvest, and like.
Unfortunately, but.
Yeah, I get it.
It's like, we tried to plan that at the last meeting, that if it was gonna be rainy, it would be fine to have, but.
I think the United States of America in general has planned their years around harvest since its inception, really.
As right as summer.
November, such as that. We, you, we, we both know people that actually plan when they're gonna get married or have children around calving season and harvest.
I think they know on this, the women that come to church along during harvest.
So, I don't have much time to. Fill, so.
Nice tradition, though, I'll say that.
I did have a nice, like, subcommittee meeting on the scholarship committee. Um, you know, I give the scholarships every year. We did a few changes this year, part of it is because our revenue is a little bit lower for that fund. And to the six. District scholarships, I have passed president.
What do they use for fundraisers, or like, go?
Uh, that's the main one, it's a call term, we did discuss my ideas of trying to do some more fundraising, some of it's like, um, what they do at the. What's the annual conference?
When they have the little football, or whatever, whatever Jamie comes up with, yeah.
Yeah. Not that it's. I mean, there's still funds there, but just a little, just watching. What it is. They discussed fewer scholarships at a higher amount, um, but we did go with the six districts and pass president. Um, so that's good, I mean, I do think it's a good program, but.
Well, I'm sure it's hard because the cost of college expenses is so much, you know, five hundred dollars doesn't even cover a book.
And that's crazy what college.
It is. I had like, there's a few among the committee, like Micah and Chris, and they're both, their, their kids have received the scholarship, like they said, anything helps. But they didn't address that, you know, costs are higher. Wasn't a long meeting, but something disgusting, keep moving forward with. So. That's about all I had, Gene.
Once again, it was a busy week, uh, live, it's just like we're doing work for the county, but I, nothing really I can discuss at this time. I will point out that we do have our walking tour of the wellness center, and since the county was a donor, everyone that works for the county is invited, it's from six to eight tonight. I will be helping with the tours because I'm on the board, although I don't get to attend many meetings, because they're always on Tuesdays. Uh, but I'm for, looking forward to seeing who all comes out to, it's a beautiful space, so that'll be open for viewing to the donors tonight. Otherwise, uh, I have meetings tomorrow, I have a few, but last week, not any official meetings, just some phone calls and things like that, so.
Give me a reach twelve last week.
I did go to reach twelve last week, I had all of my notes, then I see when I have a meeting, I forgot I had it, so, uh. What I always look at is what.
You know what she did to me?
I can't imagine.
Oh, I was zooming in, because I was in the combine. And she takes a picture of her plate of food, says, don't this look good?
I was wanting to see if you wanted me to get it to go for it.
She did offer to bring me a meal in the field.
There you go.
Yeah, it was good, the food was good, it was actually kind of a short meeting, what I always look at is, you know, what we are doing in comparison with other counties as far as grants and, and the money that we're receiving. And I don't think that's in my briefcase, but we had bail, got some money for their park, and there were several things, so I was always happy to see that Crawford County is taking advantage of the grass center up there.
It does seem pretty bare across the board.
And we, you know, Dennison had his down payment assistance program, which is getting ready to close down, and that program is so great, when we can get it into one of our cities in Crawford County to help. Get twenty four thousand nine hundred and ninety nine thousand dollars to help with down payment and repairs to homes that possibly wouldn't be able to have loans on if we didn't have that assistance, so it helps Dennis that a lot. But you have to have some matching funds, and that I think is one of the reasons that our smaller communities can't take advantage of it, because of those matching funds that you have to have, but. Back when I worked at the bank, I did, I would say most of them, if not all of them, because there's extra paperwork to it, uh. But the paperwork was worth it to see a family that normally wouldn't be able to own a home, and sometimes when I drive by some of the houses, you know, the people are still in them, and I think what a great deal that was to get them some new windows before they moved in and. Help a dime and good things like that, so it's a great program, uh, but, yeah, it was a short meeting, uh, everything's moving along fantastically, and they, they do a good job.
Well, and we need those programs, because county seven, average age of the new homeowners, like forty two, where it used to be twenty two.
Well, and the problem, you know, if you're gonna do a U S D A guaranteed loan, there's certain repairs that need to be done, and that program works in conjunction with that, so it's a great part of the deal, so. But that was about it, you know, our transit department and all that is doing, I still wish we had more, uh. What Carol does, where they have a free day to take the elderly to the grocery store and things like that, but we do have our tickets, but we just wanna do whatever we can to get the benefits that they offer over in the county, so that's why I go to the meetings. Yep, I did that, so, yeah, tomorrow I'll have, with Central Iowa, I'll have, uh, uh, early childhood, handicapped tomorrow, so, start off with.
You know, the, I'd just like to chime in on something you brought up there, when we were talking about the average age of our homeowners. And where that's went. You know, even the entry level homes, you know, most, most young families, or even a young person that buys their own first home, or it might be just one of the little, a small. Couple bedroom place, or one bedroom place, or, you know, I mean, that. I think we gotta make sure that we understand. That's your investment in, in, in America. And that's what starts to invest you in the process that we're part of right here, you know, whether it's your property tax, and, you know, I, I, when I look around, I, you, you, everybody's seen them, pretty black T M C trucks that run around on the highway. That pull the flatbeds, always spotless looking, or just a sharp outfit, great drivers that are always friendly in the parking lot when you meet them. You know, that's a company owned, the, the, the guy that built that up, can't remember his name, but he built that company. And basically, just turned it over to a profit share to the, you know, it's a company owned, like I V's employee owned, so it's all employee owned, whenever you've got an investment in something, you stay more engaged in. You, you, you got personal, and I think that's why it's important that we really work hard to get our young, our young people the opportunity to find, and I actually encourage it, like I did my son, I, 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 everybody, even Louis once, one time, when we were talking, when I first come home from the army, I said. You know, make sure you buy a house right away, it's the first big equity that really won't lose money like a car, or a pickup, or a truck. Your house is usually something, if you take care of it and keep working on it, we'll always appreciate and give you more equity, and I think we don't always remember, remind ourselves to talk to our kids about that, I think that's missing in our school system about. How to, how to condition yourself to be. Invested in America. And I, I think, you know, when you were talking about that, Gene, I think that's stuff that we really need to emphasize more, you know, for our younger people, and, and give them something to focus on that's a positive, you know, I, I think that's, I, that's just where I'm.
You're spot on, because you can see in so many small towns that have become a rental community.
Yeah.
Personal drive to have a little friendly competition with your neighbor, neighbor to have yard appeal, it's not there.
Exactly, great point, God.
You know, and when it's all owned by. X Y Z rental company, people are just there, they have no attachment to the community, you can't get, they won't get involved in.
Fired apartments, and different things.
You know, whatever organizations within the community, but when they own a home, they're involved.
Yeah, they're protecting their interest in their neighbors, that now are their neighbors, not just the person who lives next door.
I blame it a little bit on the regulations and what it takes to qualify to own a home. The credit score versus your years on the job, your, the whole package of what it takes even to get the U S D A loan used to be, uh, for the disadvantaged folks that did not qualify for a conventional loan. Even while I still worked, they made those a little bit more difficult because of the fact that if you didn't have that investment in it, it was, seemed almost like a rental house, if you didn't have any skin in the game. Uh, you can walk away anytime, because you're not really losing anything, you've been paying monthly on it, but you just walk away, and so they kind of tighten that up a little bit, because of a few bad actors, you know, um. I was just reading through this, funny, if you handed this to me, the section eight rent program that they have out there with U S D A, so, that might be easier to get into, so rather than owning that home, which. As a young person, you may not realize the stability that it gives you, knowing that you're not gonna get your rent, you know, pulled out money, or your landlord's kids are coming home, they kick you out with thirty day notice, you know, there's a whole lot of security that comes with owning your own home, plus that pride of, this is mine. But.
On, in your, in your buildings, equity in your life.
You should be, but the other thing is, is there are not starting homes, starter homes out there anymore, the average house, you know, whether. Where you would think it should be a thirty thousand dollar house, you look at it, it's ninety thousand dollars for that, you know, it does not, there is not that starter home, just since you guys were talking, I was thinking about my starter home, I'm like, people these days wouldn't live in that, you know? It wouldn't be good, but we lived there to save money to buy our first home, you know, my dad let, let me live in a house he was one step from being torn down, well, he could tear it down when he moved out, but. We were able to save money because we, you know, we're, the cost is, and let's just put it that way, but we had great pride in it, because, uh, you know, that's just the way we were. But those houses aren't out there, those houses have been bulldozed already, because they want to farm them, you know?
And even the cost of renting is pretty high.
The cost of rent, even a mobile home, to live in a, a mobile home park, which used to be the, the, the great place to start out, they're not what they used to be either, but a lot of that is what the utilities truly are, and what it costs to bring the water in, and the, the taxes on that property. This is what I have to run it out for to break even for me, it's not that they're gouging anybody, it's the true cost of.
Well, nobody's in business to break even, I hope to get, I mean. You know, they're getting, most of the time.
Yeah. I was Crawford County here, a zero bedroom, a house with no bed, or region twelve payment standards for one, one of twenty five. If I read this right, it says a house with zero bedrooms in Crawford County would be six hundred and ninety dollars, one bedroom. Eight hundred and thirty four, two bedrooms, nine hundred and forty eight, three bedrooms, twelve hundred and fifteen, four bedrooms, fifteen twenty five, that requires payment standards, I have to read this a little bit, it's the first time I've seen it, but if that in fact is what, uh, the standards are, for a zero bedroom house.
My first apartment in Manning was retirement community. Let me stay, because I had open space, it's a hundred and fifty dollars on all utilities.
And you were wondering how you're gonna pay your bill?
And the little, little old ladies loved him, they were great, visited him all the time, they would bake me meals and cakes, and they'd say, Dave, leave your laundry basket, we'll just do it for you.
Where?
I don't know why I moved.
Take you back, and I don't know, but, yeah.
And that, and you're, and you're old enough now, that, that might have been that, the age of, if you left your laundry basket there, you'd come back and your hankies were ironed, your undies were ironed.
Yeah, you get home from working and, you come over and tell me how it went today, and you know, and visit them.
Oh, my gosh.
I said something to my wife about that once, ironing her hankies, because I hate when I unfold them, and I get a little crankle bed, you know, and that's because I was from a spoiled generation of mom and a grandmother that did that stuff.
Arnie pillowcases?
Yeah.
I'd love to know what she told you.
I was kind of curious about that, too.
I, I didn't have to say it twice.
Oh, there you go, I bet not.
And I do my own hankies now.
You're right, you got the point, you know, it's all like a good mix, though, but should have a retirement community with some young families and mixed in with it.
Yes.
You know, the agent wisdom.
It would give a great, great aspect for retired people to look forward to, I'm gonna get up and go and talk with Dave this morning, or I wanna see their kids raised, instead of pushing them in the corner and just say, you know?
Yeah.
A lot of them were just, even if you gave them five minutes, just chat us, came in, you know, just, they were happy to know what was going on.
That loneliness is a big part of it.
It is, and feeling needed, feeling needed, if they're able to do your laundry for you, or, you know, really, I.
I mean, it'd be a good mix, I think, in, in general, a young family, and always have an extra hand there, there's a guarantee if you need to run off somewhere, and somebody to watch your kids, if there's not twenty people, I'd, I'll do it, you know?
I need to run to Walmart, and I don't want this guy with kids going with me, I'll take them, I said it all the time, I'll be.
Oh, great point.
Yeah, absolutely.
Think about it.
Yeah, it's just really.
That would be so cool.
Whole different vision, though, it's something that.
Just read the guidelines here.
Excellent.
Your next project.
Do we all have any funding for a project like that?
I, I don't know.
I bet they should.
I don't know.
Spend a lot of money to put people in a, in retirement, not community or whatever, you know?
And even though they're in there with people, they're in there alone.
They are.
And you know what, what the young people can gain from a visit, like you said, they visit with.
Oh, yeah.
What you gain from that is, you know, something that you'll share with people for.
And well, just to transfer knowledge, hard earned knowledge to some of the older people living in there, and pass that on to the young people, don't make the same. I think we need to start something.
Can gain wisdom from places others, you know, look. So it's up, I'm gonna just open your ears. That's excellent, that's a great point, that's a nice discussion, thanks, Gene.
There we go, all right, um, is it on the agenda to discuss the snow removal estimate, or?
It's not, I didn't get it till yesterday afternoon, so.
Was this the only one we got?
Yeah.
Just engine.
I know, didn't really.
Snow's not cheap.
Too much, no, snow's not.
It melts.
It's a waste of them, I mean. Roads, everything, it's just a big waste of money.
You know what they say, removing snow.
Is this covered?
Snowing is like cleaning the house when the kids are growing. I used to have that on my, yeah.
For a time, based on how many inches of snow we get, I mean, that invoice has a total on it, I don't know why they put a total on it, but each line describes how many inches of snow.
They bring in heavy equipment, what it actually.
Right, yeah, they're charging for equipment and stuff.
I, we might have to reevaluate.
Yeah, no, I was planning on it, I just wanted to get that.
I didn't know if I missed it, then are there any other ones?
We should take some action, give flowers, and our first memorable snow will be November third.
November third, yeah.
It's the day before the election.
Well, that'll make your turn now a little. Hope it's wrong, but.
Everybody else, please miss.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our ball, he's usually pretty close to being on.
They got a lot better equipment nowadays. Yeah, got a revise of the almanac, whatever.
You good, Gene?
Yes, I am.
All right, well, I had a. Very busy week, but I had some stuff going on, we, uh, I'll just kind of go back to, I mean, yesterday I had the E M A commission. And, uh, we had several things that we went over on that. Obviously, the Tri-City barbecue was discussed, we made quite a few. I should take quite a few, but we made several obvious. I'm gonna call them improvements, to how we protected the public, and, uh, there was a few. Things that obviously that were, I think, if I remember right, I did write this down, but I think it's, it, their immediate after actions review they did was like twenty seven points to go over. And.
That's good that they did that.
Yeah, yeah.
Used to do it after every exercise in the military, you always had.
Always have an after actions review, yes, sir. And, uh, I, I beat him to death with military things, because that's, that's where I get my passion for that stuff, is being prepared and ready, you know? And I was in one of them units that, you know, you're, could be anywhere, heading anywhere in the world, eighteen hours, you're gone, that's rock, you had to be ready for anything, anytime. So. We, we, because we didn't, I don't want to make this sound. No, anyway, to put it other, we didn't place a priority on the E M A. Until we went full time and hired a person full time, and, and though it had been discussed, I know, I remember talking to, to, to Mr. Miller about it, you know, I mean, do we need to go to full time, because I, some of the questions that I would bring up with him, you know, how do we get to this, he says, he's, have more time in the day? You know, so, I mean, that, that always made sense to me, that, you know, we needed to do more, to be ready, to be engaged. So it's got us behind the curve, especially if you compare where we sit compared to other counties, even our side. And, uh, so we, we, a lot of stuff was discussed on that, for the Tri-City being a good, you know, it was his first official Tri-City, to help prepare, and with, and he, and he uses what we watched going on in the country. You know, whether it's sniper shooters, or, or, you know, worst case scenario stuff, because that's what you have to plan for, is the worst, you hope for the best, but you always plan for the worst, that's, that's what anybody in the world preparedness will tell you, that's why the fire service is always out doing public events, you know, uh. That's why the police services do, do all the things that they do to go out, help generate public awareness and that, but, uh, I think that, uh. Some of the, the new applications they made, and this was something that I've. You know, growing up in the Reagan years, you know, he was, he had a large emphasis on, on preparedness. And being demonstrating through the military in particular, that was what I did, that was my job in the days. That's a deterrent, that preparedness, and that obviousness, and that hands on, seeing us there, working, doing our stuff, that's a deterrent, was a deterrent for the Soviet Union, to the point that there is no Soviet. You know, and, uh, I think, you know, we need to refine the details, there's some issues that were, that were registered. Uh, but we had officers on the roof, they were able. Uh, but we had officers on the roof. They were able to, from this side of the roof, monitor everything in the kid's zone and on this side. You know, just to make sure that everything was running smooth. They were able to monitor the parade or the, excuse me, the, the, uh. Bandstand and where the, most of the activities could have some kind of complication. They could see that from above. Uh, there were some things they found up there. That, you know, some other stuff that, you know, there were some complaints issued, you know, about who was up there and stuff. So that was all, that's all been addressed. Uh, the building being unsecure at one point, that was, that was actually talked about.
Was all night.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, if the building was unsecure. And that's being addressed. Uh, I think that, and this, we'll throw this at the, the IT world. I think maybe. This alerted us to it, that we need to probably get onto the badge system for entry, because that badge, that, that entry system can actually say. If you had a reason to be in here during that event, your cards can be activated to be able to get in. And everybody else is to get shut off. You see what I'm getting at, bro? And I, I thought that would give access to the people that gotta go on the roof. And then anybody else that didn't have any professional business to be in this building, because we don't need people wandering in and out of there. They could be. Doing something nefarious. We don't know, because we don't know. Now, I do know that some people went back and viewed the cameras to see who's been in here. And there was people that shouldn't have probably been in here that night. That's being dealt with. Um, but there's, there's always going to be lessons learned. And this was the first time, uh, we used the concrete barricades and actually Peterson Manufacturing, thank you very much. I mean, on behalf of the county aspect, I mean, it was a city event, but Peterson Manufacturing put them up for use for no charge. Uh, the city put them up themselves, you know, and then they did that in coordination with our EMA. Uh, and there was a few things where it was in the way because Zach didn't know for sure, you know, uh, some people that have been doing. Different things in there and volunteering as the in-charged person for, whether it's the band or whether it's, you know, the, the barbecue area. But I did hear that the barbecue people actually was appreciative of all the added security factors, you know? And so that's, that's, you know, I, I think that if it was a positive, it's things that we haven't done and a lot of people like to think, well, then we didn't have problems before, but. We live in a whole different world.
Change is hard.
Yeah, change is hard, really. I agree. And, but I, I, I think that when, whenever and everybody's, you know, doing their after actions and stuff. I think we'll, we'll, we'll come to a better place for all this. I really do.
Communication.
Yeah.
Is a lot of it.
You bet.
Finding things out the hard way.
Well, you always do.
Yeah.
Nothing's ever easy.
I have.
I read your ass, I mean.
Yeah. I think that's fabulous. Can I ask a question before I forget what it is?
Sure.
Do we have a figure on what that extra protection cost the county, ID or the city, you know, where we're paying, you know? Sheriffs to be on extra duty, you know, because we wouldn't want to take them off the county roads to be uptown denizen for, you know, two days and nights. Is there a cost to that, uh, that is?
I would assume there's some cost to it. Uh, what was it? I mean, we'd have to talk to the sheriff about his budget.
Minimal or, I mean.
I mean, there, there was minimal deputies there. Most of it was PD number. I mean, I think the sheriffs were helping out a little bit, but I did notice that one of them was Roger. Well, Roger's on duty all the time, other, other lights.
Roger didn't pass us the things.
Yeah, but the deputies, you know, I mean, as far as that goes, uh. I, we'd have to ask.
I, I just, because I, you know, have the job of sitting in the green room and I can see the crowd and they were there in force. I mean, I saw the sheriff.
Oh, you see sheriffs patrolling around.
I'd say we're just up there in their full, uh.
Then they might have been on duty and then they were on their dinner break or something and enjoying some barbecue. I, I don't know. We, we would have, I, I sure don't want to speak for another.
I didn't know if that was discussed, you know, what.
I didn't really, last, last night, I did. I was trying to keep that meeting going too.
All right, well, I'll do the same today.
But the, uh, the, uh. I, I think we learned a lot of good valuable lessons. And nothing overly dramatic. I mean, there was a few, you know, incidents, but nothing that was, you know, not, everything's fixable and in short order, you know? And to make improvements for the next time, you know, it's a good way to do a test, because. This is usually a good community event where most things stay pretty civil. Uh, I don't think there was any major altercations of any type, not that I'm aware of anyway. And I think it's a good test because obviously we try every year to get rag rub. Well, that's a lot bigger deal than, than, you know, takes a lot more. So, I mean, we, gives us some ideas. Uh, they, they use a new handheld communications. Uh, there's some, there was, there's some bugs to work out with that. Uh, because they, they do that or somebody can't even get on that, you know, that net. And intercept messages and stuff like that. They change the frequencies and codes and so that they can, you know, do to help alert. When there's different things going on, that exchanges that might require security or stuff or stuff like that. So, I mean. I, I was impressed that we're trying to get ahead of anything that might happen, you know? I mean. Nobody was ever expecting a Charlie Kirk incident. Nobody would expect, you know, you, you, maybe you were, you were aware that that could happen because they have security there, obviously. But, you know, you don't ever expect it to be that drastic until it is.
Well, the, I think it was Friday when they were still setting up a, before they had the barriers up, an older lady and her. Tried to get to thirty-one drug. And I stopped and like, where are you going? And we have to get down there. We were setting up and like, oh, you can't get down there. And they said, well, we're from defiance. We don't know. And I said, you have to bag, you know, so.
Oh, they're in their car.
They were in their car trying to get to thirty-one drug. And I said, I can walk down and get what you need. And they're like, well, we need some picture frames. So they actually, you could probably pick those up at Walmart, which I feel bad that if thirty-one had a chance of selling some picture frames that. But she was literally trying to drive down as we were setting up.
And there is, well, when we have a big, sorry.
I do see the reason to have the barriers to stop that because that did happen. And so, and that's something that we're not used to. But the good thing about that was is they had a backup plan for, you know, Manny had their forklift and they needed to move one for emergencies such as getting an ambulance down there for a heart attack. That was ready to roll and he was on, uh, and he was not on the clock. He was doing that as his volunteer part. So that is refreshing also.
You know, this community, just like all, all of our Crawford County communities, really comes together well. I mean, there's lots of volunteers that try. There's boat. I mean, it's like the half of the town that isn't out there on the dance floor having a beer is volunteering. I mean, it, there's a lot of people. And so we should actually be pretty proud of that, I think. And it, and, and there's, it takes a lot to bring it all together. And then there are. Few people that think, oh, we have never done that before. I'm not doing that, you know, but it, it's for everybody's benefit, you know? And, and I think after everything kind of settles down and everybody sees what was going on and how it really wasn't a major inconvenience and people were trying to work with everybody. But anyway, so we discussed that quite a bit last night. And I think that that's going to help make better events and hopefully safer events. You know, there's always the one-off. That you're always trying to prepare for. And we actually do talk, Zach and I talk a lot on the phone about stuff like that when I got windshield time. About, uh, we brought up Faraday, uh, Faraday bags and Faraday cages. We talked about them last night. What they are is if, if we ever, now this is once again, an extreme case, but it is something that it's emergency management's job to prepare us for. If there was ever this neutron detonation, like to say they detonated a bomb over Chicago or wherever. To wipe out our electric grid, because we all know if our electric gets wiped out, we're, we're, we're in trouble. I mean, water supplies start to dry up, you know, there's a lot of things that become a problem. And so we discuss things like that. And we were talking about Faraday cages the other day. And that would actually shield like our generators here at the courthouse or out at the tower sites, because communications and water supplies, you know, working with DMU. And rural water, you know, rural water's kind of out of our district, but a lot of our communities get rural water. So, I mean, like covering generators, you know, so that them things will still operate.
Like a converter.
I don't know for sure what's all in a Faraday, but they, they call the bigger ones the cages or a box, a shelter, you know? I mean, literally you can shelter a structure, you know? I'm sure that wouldn't be cheap.
Communications center in Woodbury County, but with is lying if I cover.
Yeah.
To block any of that.
There you go. So I think it's, it's something similar to that. I wouldn't think it would be lead, but I know lead is dense enough. It's dense enough. That's why we use depleted uranium on the tanks in the Army. That's even more dense than lead. It's not necessarily healthy for the guys inside the tank, but it's better than dying, I guess. But the immediate, the acute versus chronic thing. The, but the. I mean, th- those are the things that I think EMA is doing a really good job on. And then we, we also discuss ad nauseam. I'm sure he gets sick of me always. Throwing it right back at, well, it's gotta be in the budget. You know, we gotta make sure we're budgeting it. Make sure that. Every dollar's noticeable, but make it the least amount noticeable as possible. And, and Zach's really starting to grasp that effect. So he's trying to look at ways. You know, he's gonna need a building that'll house, you know, just basically a shed to house all the equipment that he's got. And I said, so just do like Mr. Miller did. Start putting so much away in your reserve every year. Until you got enough to build it and probably within five to ten, you'll have the money to build that. So make your, and he's, and he's already started his strategic five-year plan on, on, on things that he needs to do and purchases that need to be made. We did, uh, talked about, uh. Oh, what else we're beyond?
Ty, he has a pretty good reserve now though, from the things that Rick had put away that you do.
The, the, oh, that was okay. That gets me to my left, next point.
Oh, sorry.
Well, no, you're, thanks for bringing it up because I was trying to think where it's going next. Uh. The reserves that he's got, you know, a lot of that is the tower monies that were left over from last year. And that stays in his reserve. So that was in his budget amendment. And then there was some reserves for this trailer that got put on there. And the trailer is something that we actually talk about, putting Faraday stuff in there, just it will be easier to protect that. In the event of a major catastrophe like that, it'll be easier to protect that little unit, to have communication systems at the tower. Than it, than, I mean, maybe we could protect our comm center. Probably would be a little different to do. I don't know how we would do it, but if we could. It's going to be imperative to have that because we're obviously going to have a lot of emergencies and stuff like that. But if we did it with that, we can have, we can run our comm center out there. And I saw one night, Zach was telling me that he, when he was out on his vacation, he must have been doing a lot of EMA work. He went down to, uh. I remember for sure which town it is, but in Colorado there, he went down and checked out their EMA. And they actually have, I don't know if it's yearly or quarterly or how they do it. They have a trailer like that and they run their, I don't know how long for, if it's a half a day or a day. They literally run their comm center out of that for that period of time for training, for that emergency. They, they jump out and they run it out of that trailer just so that they have, they're prepared. So, I mean, that way you're in something that happened to the courthouse tornado or whatever. You know, you, you, you got something like that that could actually, you know, supplement your communication systems. Because obviously if you have something that would destroy the courthouse or take out the communications, you're gonna need, you're still gonna have emergency response and maybe more. So, I mean, he's working on things like that, you know, I mean.
I would like to see how his wife feels about doing that on vacation.
I'm fairly certain she knew who the man was when she married.
The last question that I would have is, do you have an idea of Barbecue Fest, how the, it break even, you know, with your CDs?
I've heard, yeah.
Okay, because I always wait to hear, you know, this year was a little bit different because we didn't have the big donors. We, we got bands were very inexpensive, so I'm wanting to see what that bottom line is.
Well, we didn't have the big donors, so that, I think, I, 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 I'm gonna say that. Paul did a pretty good job of responding to a, I won't call it a crisis, but to a major change in how I, yeah, to Brian.
I.
And I thought the vent came off fantastic.
He was a one-man show.
Yeah.
With his, you know, tourism coordinator taking a different job and with his assistant having a baby so recently, he was a one-man show.
Yeah.
And he was everywhere.
And he was literally.
He was absolutely anything. I, I could not believe how he just was focused on.
By the, by the end of both nights, he looked pretty.
But he does not.
I doubt he never quit.
He does not get frustrated or short-tempered or any of those things.
Oh, he's very mild-mannered, very.
So I, I, I'm feeling real confident that probably, because our vendors, you know, were very satisfied. I know that tickets were coming in like crazy.
And, and that's the world it came from, you know, he was up, he worked up there at the lakes and that was his world. I mean, so, so he, 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 you know, and I'm pretty sure that's, you know, the hiring commission. That was probably the consideration, you know, he could keep that moving properly. And I, I do know that him and Mariah and I hope Dan will be in there.
Dan's gonna be great. I think he did a great job of getting bands that everybody enjoys, so.
Well, the Friday nights were fantastic.
You'd be amazed what they, what the price of those bands and everything was. Very reasonable, so.
I'll get it. I think this has just been kind of created.
I cannot believe how you could just be exactly nine forty-five, not nine forty-four.
So anyway, there, there was more that got discussed last night. If you got any questions, you're, you're welcome to ask me after you get done with the rag rubs meeting. But it was a good meeting last night, uh, and.
Powers are moving along nicely. You can't play powers or.
Oh, yeah. And that was, I didn't get you at the towers, so it's a good.
Give you two minutes.
I'll give you a quick hit on the towers. They're operational. Uh, the paging has got a little bit of question. It's components in the three older towers. And then the, the tower in Sleswig, which is one of the original towers. The componentry in the box is what the suspicion is. Tim said last night that he was pretty sure, not a hundred percent, but pretty sure that all the dishes and stuff will be fine. But he thought there will be some components in the work, in the towers, the, the boxes. You know, or shelters that, that'll have to be replaced. But if you remember when Boss came and talked to us, he actually said that there's going to be a good chance that we're going to have to replace some.
Very original microwave dishes, I remember that conversation.
Remember that?
Had a couple hundred thousand.
Well, probably going to be more than I want to pay, but I mean, where are we? I mean. And, and that'll be, you know, there, there's no money set back from that. So that would be something that will be in next year's budget. But Raycom has actually been good at working with us. So I, I, I don't see where they would be hard to work with. We'll see.
It's just on the paging channel.
That's just.
Trouble, right?
Yeah.
Understand things correct.
And then, and then, well, then the, the Sleswig Tower, the redundancy, you know, where we'd set them up in a daisy chain, where if a tower goes out, that bounces back the other way. To wherever, because there's two of them that communicate back to Ridge Road. And I think Sleswig and maybe Manella or Dal City, I don't remember which it is. But it'll, it'll go through one or the other. But if, if it would get taken out on this side and Sleswig's, we'd have to go up and manually. Kick it back, which would take some time, obviously, but knowing that, I mean, it probably wouldn't take as tight, much time, you'd think. But those are the two main things. That microwave for paging and then the redundancy in the daisy chain, I guess is what I call it. But I don't know that there's, but the components that have to be replaced, it's computer stuff that ain't gonna be free.
Have, have we ordered them or are we just?
Well, they're trying to figure out for sure what, what, what has to be replaced or if we aren't replacing.
And that's Raycom, that does.
That's Raycom. And I believe you were in the email chain with that.
I don't want to hear.
And, uh, and, but Zach's been the one communicating with them. And, and that you got, because Dave's the chair, he got included in that email chain. But I, I don't think you've talked to him personally though.
Just on the phone and then Zach came up and then it's kind of been, and Zach's.
Yeah, because you're the board chair, I think that's why he can't.
Hang on, wait.
Ross.
Here back, uh, getting things set up to do some meetings.
Okay.
That's all in our contract.
Over, yeah.
Anything else?
Nope. Sounds good.
I think I covered it all. Sorry regarding, uh.
Don't worry.
Want to get some words out?
Regarding towers, I know we get some, uh, emails that to the regard of they want to make some alterations to the, you know, the components of the towers there. I'm not sure who handles.
Zach.
Zach, Zach, Zach.
Right. Okay, okay. I guess I'm gonna get forward to him. That's not that one.
What's that?
But this, every day he's, I'm looking for more, making a lot of money on it. Do them all that year, contract, like go where their fees and do it for a long time. Did you all see that one?
Yeah.
That's on this tower here.
Yeah.
Some said not Horizon, some company that works for Horizon acquired a dollar space and they want to renegotiate.
Yeah. Do we, do, do, have we ever had that happen before? I mean, do we get an attorney involved in that? Because I, I don't think that things have gotten cheaper. They probably.
There always was an attorney involved, but I don't know.
I don't remember.
Used to be Rick Frank back in the day.
Yeah.
I don't have who it is now for that night.
You know, I don't, well, we'd have an attorney involved in that.
I think so.
Yeah.
It's a contract negotiation. It's a contract negotiation and, 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 and M and A, markets and acquisitions isn't really gonna be called specialty, so I, maybe he could recommend somebody.
Yeah, she probably get point of Tom. When he might be wanting to recommend that, an attorney that specialized in that stuff, I mean.
Yeah, tower negotiation.
Well, I agree.
I would ask our old consultants, but it cost a hundred twenty-five dollars to call them.
Ty, you can call them, somebody that can help for like just a minute.
We have a little levy and that's when we're talking about this stuff. I uh, yeah, that's, that's a good point. I think we're, you know, that one there, we're gonna have to probably, and there's also negotiations, uh, T-Mobile's in on something. And I don't know the whole story and that, so I don't wanna talk out of turn area. Give that with the new, for that being.
Yeah.
They have a large towers, I wish they had somebody co-located on it.
Well, and they're, they're, they've bought something that they're on the top, they'll, they'll be on this tower too already. Maybe they'll, they'll do more of them, so we'll see.
Yeah, things to move forward on.
Cut it out.
Yeah.
Okay.
You got more?
Morning, man. Good morning.
Like nothing less.
Lucky, cool one.
I had a October.
Yeah, it feels like October. I suppose we're almost at the end of it.
Yeah, I do, I do think I'm gonna make that a bigger issue on the.
When I started in two thousand two.
We don't talk about their questions.
It's, it's any, come anytime.
I always remark how different harvest is now, uh, when we get up. Never even start until we had a hard frost to, you know, get the sap.
Creative.
Beans and now it's all done before we even hardly get a frost to something.
Correct. I was thinking the same thing yesterday.
Different.
Leaves are still on a tree and we're finishing up.
I like it better. Yeah, it's nicer.
That's been a good harvest for you.
Yeah.
I mean, you've been busy out in the field because I haven't been seeing you a lot on the highway.
That's good.
Go ahead, Dan.
To begin here, uh, just the, the bridge project, uh, there, I believe today they're gonna finish up forming their concrete rails over there. Uh, so for the concrete on the actual bridge structure, uh, should be complete after today. They still have their approaches to do. The, their subcontract coming in, uh, I believe he planned on, uh, end of next week coming in to do the approaches, uh. And uh, so they're still busy, so like I said, bridge rails, doing some shaping up, weaning up. And uh, so, and the next, next week, uh, start approaches and, and they've got, I last looked, uh, about twenty-five working days left, puts a little over a month of, uh, you know, construction that they have available for working days, uh, uh, before going over. I, I think that they're on track of staying within those working days. So, uh, yeah, well, we have some bridging about the, where we're driving across, so, but uh, uh, side road, uh, I, I could see us maybe possibly in the next couple of weeks, uh, uh, being our command ourselves and do some shaping up on that side road that comes off the southwest corner there. Uh, that's work that we're gonna do. And a good bridge might even attack that.
Oh, the brewery road, are you talking about the brewery road?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where we came to agreement with the land or whatever.
Put that way ridge in?
Yeah, yeah, connect the radius, right, right, or make the radius coming off there. Swinging out a little bit, coming a little bit better approach right at the end of that bridge rail, uh, then, uh, make it a lot nicer driving, a lot nicer approach to that, uh. Uh, we, we're able to secure the easements that we needed to be able to do what we wanted there. So we'll make it a lot nicer, but that's something our guys are gonna do. We didn't wanna try and pull the plans, you know, in development, uh, awaiting easements. So we'll do it more efficiently, probably better. We, we got a good crew. We do. Bridge crew will probably, uh, find themselves, uh, out on that a little bit, so. That's where we're at over there. Uh, our great crew right now is upon two and thirty street yet. They'll be there for probably a couple few weeks yet. Uh, they got a lot of work to do on two and thirty street, uh. Uh, I believe that's probably the last grading project we'll, we'll, we'll do for the season, uh, weather pending, you know. We got good forecast looking up, but we got other small projects after this that I think we'll tackle. We wanna do some shaping up on the concrete property that we purchased over there by a chart broke and, uh, and we're purchasing, I should say, uh, we wanna get that shaved up, uh, and buckle off to, to start ready for next spring. Last check, I believe the problems off, we'll reach out to them, make sure that, you know, when we're ready, we are able to get out on, do some shaving. But we won't get out there until they're ready.
If they're gonna bail the stock off, that, that cleans up a lot of residue.
Yeah, that's, you know, that, just well, if they're, if that's what they're planning, but that's hopeful. But uh, we'll work closely with everybody in that regard. As soon as we can, we'll, we'll get in there, get that shaved up, so. But like I said, aside from that, uh, we'll probably be mentioning more for grading this, this season. But uh, and that little, uh, that two and thirty street, uh, still looking at possibility. Uh, upgrading it from level B to level A, they, they basically want, they, they expressed interest in wanting to do that financially, uh, uh, fund that. Find out something we are gonna do this year. We'll get it shaved up. Got a culvert that we need to put in on that larger back to cord to kind of bring it up to, you know, the hydrology and the things, uh, that in one area where we have submerged a box culvert. Uh, we'll get everything shaved up nice, uh, that way, uh, if it is something that goes through next year, we'll, we can put some gravel on it. Yeah, I think we've expended a lot of limestone this year to that regard, uh, just in projects and whatnot. We, it's a, may wanna hold off just.
When we, when we, uh,
Limestone.
When we use limestone that's a purchase to do a road like that, do we resupply that right away so that the costs are half as applicable? Cause next year usually it's warmer.
I, I, I did ask, oh, as far, because this year we've used approximately forty-nine hundred ton of limestone for, other than I had expected for just road, regular roadway maintenance, uh, using private land. Yeah, and we got a lot of trains coming in to replenish them, uh, so, uh, now, we're gonna get them filled up yet this fall. We'll want everything full before spring gets, uh, because in the spring of the year, when we're digging into it, their piles are gonna be frozen. They're not gonna get us trained right away, so.
Do we do two hundred on white rock this year?
Yes, yeah, yeah. And uh, so yeah, we try and get everything full, but yeah, we, we use a minimum of about four trains worth of, of limestone. You know, between, uh, the light boulevard for the ice project, which we will get free first form, uh, and Yales Smoke Road, you're probably been one out there. We had to do a fix on, uh, Lincoln Way that we get some reverse before, or at least some conversation on, uh, where the utility and tour pretty bad out there. Uh, again, continue to reach out to folks out, trying to get some, some consensus on when we're, we're looking at to get some of this back, but uh, and uh, still working on that. And, um, and two and ten street out there, which, uh, uh, discussion out here in a bit, but, um, but yeah, we've expended a lot of limestone and, uh, so to, to replenish our piles that are, it, it was wet here to begin with. So to replenish the piles, uh, we're gonna bring in quite a bit more than, than anticipated, so. Uh, but again, a lot of that being reversed, uh, just not sure how that, uh, works out budget, you know, for having that out of that line item or whatnot. Uh, yeah, because it was unexpected revenue as well, so it come again.
We'll, we'll cross that bridge when the approaches get.
Right, right.
Uh, but yeah.
Thanks for bringing that to our attention. That is interesting. I never thought of it, you know. I haven't expected usage, but there'll be, should be some revenue coming back or a lot of things.
We would hope.
Ultimately. Right.
I did read that email.
I did too.
Thanks for. Final comment left me a full sour.
Yeah, I know, I didn't really.
I will get onto that.
Didn't wanna perpetuate the, you know, the, the back and forth there, but, uh, uh, the, the final email that was sent there, uh, you know, basically insinuating that we didn't do our end of trying to communicate, uh, which is just simply false.
Whenever you use a capital letter, not. It's messaging.
Yeah, uh, it just sat wrong. I had a little bit of a moment yesterday. I sat ten feet away from, uh, following all these conversations there, I was, uh, by a speakerphone in on many of them. I know exactly how hard we tried to cooperate and get things detoured correctly and, uh, and, and the bargain effort, uh, was, is a part, see, I had to show not close up the point, get into a T intersection and say, well, these roads are barging, uh, well, what are they supposed to do? They gotta go one way or the other, find them, but it, it, that's that wrong with me, we. The long and short of it is, we got another project gonna be coming up and these are issues that are gonna have to get addressed and discussed long before that happens and, uh, a little more of an understanding of.
You use our roads all the time.
There is that. We do use it.
But it's a large surface road or that kind of traffic.
It's a, it's not comparing apples to apples. It'd be like the rail has decided to detour all their truck on thirty, you know, for them, you know.
Makes you wonder what that person's experience level was with reality outside of the office.
Well, it did make me wonder if she didn't practice the, read it twice before you get sent.
Yeah.
And realize what the message is going to be to.
You know, I, being our new engineer out this region, you, they, you still gotta always build relationships, even with people that are making a little bit of challenge.
Right, that's where I'm trying not to, you know, hold a lot of back and forth there. I understand the position, they can't, uh, they can't take funds that weren't obligated for, yeah, they rose, and, and, and that's what.
We do understand.
That sort of work, uh, legally they cannot, uh, but uh, something's gonna have to be done differently, uh, you know, she said we'll have to brainstorm on this next.
I think their funding through fuel tax or, I mean, is there any state sales tax that gets from them to that?
I don't know. I'll bet it's almost all fuel.
Yeah, I just trying to think how to.
That's just a guess though.
Maybe we need to go to their legislators and say, something needs to be changed with this.
That's a great point.
Cause state projects cost local dollars as well. Unexpectedly, as this is cost, so it's a significant amount of money, their project.
It does. And, uh, for years, yeah, their position is they, they, they've established an official detour. People are expecting to take that, uh, and they're able to fire their ass clean, uh, uh, the responsibility of the other roads are taken. They're not supposed to take them. And, uh, but, but the reality is they're gonna take them and we're stuck with that, uh. And what's gonna be bad in office next one is, uh, Lincoln Way, uh, well, of course, the gravel road, winding road, it's gonna be dusty, winding, high traffic, uh, got a lot of properties, right? Close to the road, a lot of bad traffic. It's gonna be a dangerous situation. That's gotta be really acknowledge and address that. We're creating some way to do, we probably got by lucky on two or ten, then.
You're right, right.
And, uh, and we may not get that lucky, except if somebody goes in the ditch, uh, you know.
Or a collision.
Somebody gets seriously injured, killed, uh, because of, uh, the conditions that we put forth in front of them, that's gonna be terrible. Don't wanna see that happen. I, I hope we can, uh, come to some resolve on how to, the, the, that and the specs.
Residents proximity to the road, they're, they're all close.
They are.
And, uh, they're probably gonna be pretty vocal about the conditions that they're gonna have.
I think I would be as well, too.
So. We'll, we'll be having lots of conversations regards to that. I know like this one, we had about two months preparation, uh, that it's just pretty well just dropped on, so, this, uh, project, uh, uh, this last one. We had no time to prepare or even have a, you know, that conceivable plan on how to remediate it, other than throw dust control out and hope for the best, so, uh.
Down when you set up the office at Ames, I mean, Crawford County's two dollars a way to drive, so it's easy for them just to.
Well, I'm sure that they got tons of projects going on all across the straight state. So I mean, I, I get that they, they got a plate full, but you still can't ignore the safety factors and then the expense that you're, you're helping create.
Well, and you, if you live in a county that's been fortunate to have all paved roads going, or you never think of.
Yeah.
Story county is probably pretty saturated with paved roads.
Plenty of blacktop roads. A large tax base, yeah.
It just seemed like it took forever for that bridge to get done too. It just, I don't know.
It took a lot longer than anticipated and expected.
Yeah.
I never really dig into the reasons that are behind it, I.
Well, there could be a thousand things. I mean, both our brick last, last two years, our bridge projects, look at that. I mean, this one's probably taking longer than they want to because of the things they found on that south bank. And we had one that's going to rickets. You know, you always run into stuff that you don't.
Would you think there'd be a compensation for the fact that it took so much longer? So there was that much more wear and tear on, in so much, you know, that there should be a further path?
And they, they probably do take a bit of that into consideration in their compensation for this detour. I, I don't understand completely their formula, but it is a traffic based cars, trucks, uh, uh, sexual length, uh. Maybe they don't take into duration, but, uh, but they do calculate a formula based, uh, a reimbursement for first use of the, uh, payment for.
Do we pay a reimbursement to them or they have to use their?
We do not. That's the other thing. We, we do have that, uh, enjoyment of, of using, uh, the state highways when we need to detour, uh, a few of cost, uh. So we don't, it's a, can't scream too loud, but, uh, again, we're taking minimal the traffic compared to what, you know, what they would be throwing at our kind of roads that, the roads are designed for it. We're, we're not really burdening them with, uh, much more traffic in that regard, so, uh. I do, uh, it's not, not fair compares, I feel, so. But we do, we, we, we establish detour on state highways all the time, uh, and, uh, we, we do have papers. And they do, uh, like they basically take control of, it is a DOT, uh, maintaining that way, uh, E fifty-nine when during the generation of the, you know, the detour. They do a lot of, uh, I'll do the paper markings at their process, uh, they've done some patching, they, they've, uh, they've done some maintenance items on the road, uh, prior to the detour and, uh, to, to maintain. We do enjoy that aspect of it as well, so. And, and can't scream too loud, they are doing the best. This one just kind of, you know, the obvious nature of this. I believe it's more the safety concern than anything, uh, but the traffic, it being divert.
And I think that diversion, this next project, we're really gonna have to evaluate that because, and I think the curves and all that, that's think about people in the dust, car behind, you know, where I'd hate to have a head on collision out there. And but I, it'd be good.
I foresee safety, huge safety concerns.
Kirk Rucker sent me a, I'm gonna send that to you, something about dust control stuff that they're using up in Canada.
Pre-sap?
No, that's one of them.
They probably have. They probably have a lot of it.
Not money for serving and never yet anymore.
I'll, I'll send that to you because it's, it's just about, it's a chloride flake road dust control. What that means. And I started reading it, but I was, I had to, you had to go. But I'll send that to you. If it's something that would be beneficial. I mean, it never hurts to look for more ways to control dust around there.
I'll take a look.
Yeah, I'll send it to you.
I know off topic, I did kind of look into a little bit of the, uh, that gold, uh, period material. I didn't get extensive into it, but, uh, you know, yeah, kind of the applications out there, you know, for the shelter grade, sounds a lot like just concrete with a far less water concentration to where it can actually be spreadable. Sounds similar to, uh, you know, what we're doing with the base stabilization without the incorporation, uh, with the sub, sub base, uh. I'm not sure how applicable it would be on, uh, uh, for a surface on, on roadways, but, uh, I, I didn't, I didn't look real hard into it. It just, it, it just, uh, looked to me that the applications of maybe sport really wouldn't be applicable, but, uh.
I think without doing our substate, the subgrade stabilization, you're, is still gonna bust up.
It's throwing my off with them.
Yeah. So I think if you did a subgrade stabilization and then came back with that instead of replacing another seal coat, did something like that. If, if your subgrade really demonstrated that it's solid, then you might be spending good money.
Possibly.
So, you know, keep it. Never hurts to look at things.
Bridge group, they're out patching right now, uh, we've got, uh, going out hitting the worst, worst areas, uh, we know, that we know probably really need to be addressed before winter hits here. Uh, probably about two, two and a half weeks of patching going to. Got busy stretching out county line there where there a lot of that traffic coming in, hauling into vanilla there. Kind of have to assess the safety there to uh, patching on that road, but that road really needs it. So we'll see if we can get something done, but right now they're, I believe they're gonna start a Monte sixteen, a couple of areas. And then having sixteen, uh, early road and possibly maybe down to the county like South of Vanilla there. It's where the majority of the patching is gonna be going on and they did give that. Such a plate, turn up. Their twin pipe over there, obviously that road should be opened up. I think we used it. And probably use them to do a little bit of approach shaping over at the bridge there, so. They're busy busy. They'll never run out of work. Uh, Road Tech crew, they're they've shut down their seating in spring for some for the season. Pretty damn gear out mowing, you know. They're probably gonna start mowing their highway, the the limits for the last time. But they're gonna give them a short haircut before the snow. So this will be the last.
He probably sits there counting down the minutes till that sun breaks the crest.
Oh, fuck, down he goes. Yeah, exactly. Put me on a video call when I was out there. I'm watching him just go away.
You know, I wish everybody attacked life with that kind of enthusiasm.
Yeah.
We wouldn't have anything left to do. It'd all be done.
Yeah. Motion to approve uh, purchase. I I don't believe, I apologize, but the motion to approve, but I I believe this is just a discussion. I don't. Uh, purchasing of a granite or rope maintenance material from how the materials. Uh, looking at purchasing forty thousand tons of the anthem pit. They've kind of done a cost comparison line up to some degree. It's adding. The costs went up some at the end of the approximately ninety eight cents a ton, which is considerable, but. And they're going up at the lake pit as well, from nine dollars to nine forty five. For the twenty twenty six pricing, so I think we're contracting today for twenty twenty six will be at them prices. Essentially, it costs, you had two more miles of distance from the anthem pit, you know, to. Uh, that will be more costly effective to come from house on the other side, but we do have straffers come from that direction as well, so.
Have we got tariffs prices from them yet? Is that your strat for bid? Is that gonna be about the same cost?
That's all been contracted already. I I got to pull the contract, Paul, and that Paul agreed to a pricing for the seventy thousand ton. I don't, I didn't take with the signal. I believe it's a little more than.
What are we paying for white rock at that? I don't need transportation. This obvious, I don't have transportation.
I always think I always think or number of transportation there.
Twenty, twenty five ton, twenty five a ton?
That that sounds very reasonable, uh, what it is from from the quarter. And then take a look, it's around the thirty five to thirty seven for the, you know, with the trucking that we that I always kind of. Look at to extra cost. I'd have to kind of take a quick peek or rather just shot on numbers. I wanna say it was about the twenty two, twenty five. You know, boundary, but I better not.
I remember buying the gravel for hell of what, seven, seven and a quarter, pick something.
I just wanted to say that about.
Yeah.
Because people wonder why we don't get more white rocks. There's a pretty good answer right there. But the other thing is, is and Paul's explained this so many times, Dave brought it up, oh, you know, about the. The grade A mix, the the grade A should mixture. If you went with just one or the other, if it was just the. The stuff that we get from Hallet, you'd have the mushy roads. So you need the white rock to help kind of stabilize that road, but then you need that to actually. Keep the white rock from being too hard. Otherwise, you get brittle road that's got chuck holes or washboards that are harder to get out. So I I like to remind people, just I talked to Kyle Larson a lot, who was gonna run for the house for the fourth, but now he's actually. Potentially gonna be a supervisor in Humboldt County. Then I know Raspis and then. Shoot, anyway, a couple of the supervising people, I always reference her, but just go up and drive on Humboldt County roads. In the August and come tell me if you like them. Because they have chuckles that'll leave truck tire, you know, because that's almost all white rock, because they're right there next to Webster County. So they're using mostly white. Because their transportation costs are minimal for their hours.
It does make for a very hard road.
So I just wanted to, I wanted to bring that point in while we're sitting on. Realize that we're not just trying to punish you by putting this kind of battle. The river silt, some people call it.
We're really, I I know Paul has done test sections, just on our own, you know, mixtures of gravel versus. Blackstone mixture of the two, what makes the best road for it hard, it didn't have the best, and it is, it's mixture.
That's what the Iowa State study doing too, right?
Right, right. That's uh, that's exactly what we're studying out there, that which. You know, there's three different sections aside from the one control section, so I mean. I'm sure it's. It's all subjective how it's maintained too, but but you know, to some degree, they'll see what which. Which performs better over in Spandby here, you know, and maintains its compressive strength. Uh, like what mixture of limestone versus one commercial with one intermercial and. Blackstone with the existing gravel that we've landed in, you know, it's a. That it it gives a sense of what's gonna create the best, but again, every road is gonna be different too, so it's a. It it's just to kind of get a baseline sense of what mixture makes the best. And we've done something similar, I believe, that prior to my time being here down in Lincoln Way.
I was saying, we don't, we don't maintain that anymore, do we?
I don't believe so. I'm not even sure if I know where it was even at.
Started at Jimmy Rogers, similar to the. East. But yeah, that's, I mean, I don't remember doing that for a number of years to. So it wasn't just a one year testing period. It was over. Like I didn't, it still had that strip going out there.
Multiple years would give you more. More weather exchange than.
Correct.
You said this is not supposed to be a take action item.
It is not, no.
So where we're at.
Correct. Uh, I may put it on that. I don't know Paul's in the past. I have that, you know, did a motion approve the gravel purchases, but. Then we'll put it off for next week, so. But I mentioned as a discussion, I don't figure that that's the kind of the amounts that we're looking at, uh, purchasing for a thousand corrections. And that should get us our our gravel needs for next year. Final plans for the L three one project have been submitted to my knowledge and they're significantly correct, they got everything that's pending approval. So hopefully it goes without a hiccup, so that'll be for January twenty.
Be your first big project.
Yes, it will.
First, first step, I put on projects, oil prices going down.
That'll affect it, yeah.
Sure, so we buy a foot.
So not much more or there, but Dr. Eve Road Bridge Replacement had been here over at City Hall with. Old Miller or consulting with and Jessica and the DMU over. Uh, Superman asked about the right way. That that doing some perimeter lining of their super made through that project, but. Uh, moving forward with plans there, the. Timeline there is hopefully a late twenty twenty six, a letting to be for construction to be done in twenty twenty seven. That's got a lot of stuff to do before then, but that's over the goal. I think they're looking at a different project of bridge part of. On fifty nine, twenty twenty eight, don't wanna do both in the same year. So after that, we'll be, if we're waiting another year after that. We'll be out of, you know, having our our raise ground to money available, so it's. Twenty twenty seven, hopefully moving forward with this, so.
Uh, they had any, has the railroad changed to the plate yet? Who magically sat, or at least sat down at the table to discuss?
They've given us a a the variance for for being on again, but. Design the bridge as as we're all good to do, not having to fan the entirety of the right way. Uh, which is huge, of course, where you would have. Design a bridge that we want and not have to do a lot of. We were approached this with highway thirty, we really didn't have a a solution if they wouldn't. But you know, there'll be things that come up here in the design process that I'd love to address. I don't think railroad is up familiar with, you know, the issue that we do have sewer bank coming through there. I don't wanna, you know. It it's not a huge issue. Us, they could make it a huge issue, hopefully not, you know, we just don't wanna, you know. Wait, it's incorporated and check plans that the sewer man's gonna be learning. Uh, prior to the demolition of the existing bridge, with the concern there being at the clay line. A lot of vibration during the demolition could damage it. Yeah, and and then the cleanup and excavation of which would have to occur would. Would be, throw a lot of red flag rich into the being able to proceed with the construction as you do and and. You'd be really, really making a nightmare at that point, so. Taking the precautions to line it so we don't have them issues during construction. They'll be able to have check plans all the way. It runs right parallel with the railroad.
And the railroad vibration doesn't affect that then? I mean, that would be a lot of vibration on that. Wouldn't you think?
The city does have a easement for the for it to be there and.
It just makes it pretty sturdy because of the drains. I mean, I'm not.
There's a guy from Ames that does a great, looks like he does a great job, and that's like cavalor after he's done with it, so he was just here last week. They need a business, but.
So, so yes. I don't think it's a big deal. It's gonna be costly, like, you know, the fight. That's a DMU of the city, but it's a. I don't believe it's gonna be a big deal to get it done. Don't wanna make it a. Shine a huge spotlight on it. It'd make a big deal of the railroad to drag this on.
Well, you don't wanna leave it out in the grant money.
Right, right. It's like thirty million dollars.
It's an expensive bridge.
But the the total project was. It's like three, sorry, around three, you know, rail was a considerable part.
Wasn't half of it.
Terrible part.
It's half of it, or close.
I said that number, my. That's fine.
We don't want to mess up on that.
We don't want, no, and we we don't want Gene to not be able to get to work on Tuesday.
I'll tell you.
But things moving forward there, hopefully looking at by the end of twenty twenty six, first of all, twenty twenty seven for. Point twenty seven construction is the the goal we're setting. And last, the conversation about the D O T for highway thirty closure. Again, gonna be compensated for the the life to have the fix for the repair that early on. What they are compensating us for is for dust control that we had to put down throughout the project. And and of course, their their detour compensation calculations for the use of E six, E fifty nine. For a detour, uh, which jumps up about fifty nine thousand is where that. Plans, it's a. Again, I wish traffic just wouldn't float there, taking that.
Just did.
Lost like water. Have the least resistance.
Yes.
But this is.
Was terrible.
I said. All stuff that is gonna be part of the discussion for this next project on how we're supposed to handle the safety issues.
Yeah, keep us as far as I know, we can help with that discussion because, so like you said, the next one's gonna be. I think by far. More dangerous.
Even more miles on the gravel, why not be, because of, you have to get on down there by the dog food line?
Yeah, you have to cross the tracks twice.
Some clear Ivy P.
Yeah. Yep, they have the, yeah. The two rail crossings.
Yeah.
Dangerous, how many wrecks there was when Ivy P was just operating down there. They have to put a lot of people that aren't used to that.
We can embargo roads, that is an option. I know that's what they want us to do, but. Fact of the matter is, our office is gonna get flooded with ag exemption, and that's where everybody's trying to get going, is the ethanol plant right there. And I just, I I got nightmares trying to picture two great trucks meeting each other on that. Rebel road.
It's in the dust.
In the dust, it's.
Kind of gets snail new sleepover.
Most of it's farmers or truckers that do it all the time, so dust is nothing new to them. But I'm I'm less worried about two trucks meet than than a car, an inexperienced driver. Meeting a truck on that in dust, so you don't even see it.
The dust is, you know.
The good thing is, we got plenty of heads up on this, we got some time to truly. Half communication and collaboration, I'm capable to do, so, yeah. That's, that's.
Other guy.
Thanks, Ben.
Hey, thanks, Bill.
Good update, thank you. Thank you.
I was babysitting.
I knew they were in safe hands. Okay, move on to change November tenth meeting to November twelfth. Hi, you brought this up to me. We talked, I talked to Terry. Monday didn't work because we have to canvas votes on Wednesday anyways.
Right, yeah, Monday doesn't work because the provisionals and we still receive mail by noon.
I just had a preference, not an absolute.
Yep, yep. Yeah, so in the eleventh is a holiday. And code states that if you can't have the canvas on Tuesday, you will have it on Wednesday. So it's just, rather than having two meetings. You know, yeah, nine AM still work. Yeah, we can do regular time. Yeah, definitely.
So I'm gonna make a motion to. Move the November tenth meeting to November twelfth for reasons of election, effectively for the election canvas.
I'll second that. We have motion and a second. And for the discussion. All favor Sam.
Have set time and date for location and location of the public hearing budget amendment.
Yeah, I didn't know if you wanted to do this. I just wanted to start the discussion, I guess, on the. Budget amendment. I know the Will Collin had mentioned, he might have something for an amendment, but he didn't get back to me on what that was. And I know a couple of his funds, the forfeiture fund and the enhanced substance abuse tract fund. Um, he needs spending authority. I don't believe he budgeted expenditure line items. Or that, so those are just, yeah, the money, yeah. Not to exceed the fund balance for those specific funds. Um, the capital fund. Um, needs a budget amendment. It has been expended. There were some carryover projects from city center. There were. The the HVAC for the L E C was completed recently. We have yet the trim project to finish the floor in the courthouse. That's just under seven thousand.
About IT stuff.
Um, I started, I was working on a. His portion and I emailed him what I had, but I believe he has some more also. Um, based on, I found my information. Um, from our last I T committee meeting for budget prep. That explained what the projects were that the previous I T director had. Um, put in the budget. So I'm not sure if there are gonna be some changes potentially to that. I have so many papers. Sorry about the tree killing I did, but.
We set a date, dime today. Are you ready for it?
I don't know. I feel like you should wait a week or two maybe to set that time and date. But yeah, I just kind of wanted to just bring forward a little information about what could potentially be on. Um, the budget amendment. Yeah, it looks like. Not including any projects, but just basically covering salary changes in I T, those kind of things. The extra expense we had with.
You will take two of them.
Advanced communications for that, for them overseeing I T for a period in this fiscal year. Um, a little bit of that, it's up to fifty two thousand dollars a budget amendment for I T and that doesn't. Um, a little bit of that, um, it's up to fifty-two thousand dollars a budget amendment for I T, and that doesn't include anything that. Ryan has potentially, um, seen, that means, yeah, because some of our, our servers are approaching their. You know, usefulness, yeah.
We could take no action today, and then, if you're ready next week or in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, yeah, I'll get on that, and I believe the sheriff probably has a need. I don't know how imminent it is, but if he has some information that he.
I think probably the best to express to anybody that's needing anything, how much we actually already have on that amendment. To make sure that if, if it's a want versus a need.
Yeah, exactly, no, I know, and I feel like most of this are needs and not wants, but. Um, and, and it's a matter of like that capital, I said, had just mentioned that the capital fund was, um, entirely expended. Um, and then there's a couple more projects to do, so it'd be whatever that dollar amount, whatever you feel like that dollar amount needs to be. Um, we moved to our new, uh, our new election room, and, um. The cabinets, and this was my assumption, that they were staying, they did not stay, the cabinetry along that wall. So, um, I have very little storage down there, um, so.
Kind of storage you're looking for.
Anyway, probably, yeah.
I mean, as mobile as you are with that stuff.
No, that for, um, in that room, I need, probably the cabinets would have worked really well. Um, we, uh, would like to also maybe add, uh. A small, a wall to store, so our election equipment is again locked. Locked in a locked room, about that, yeah, double secured, so.
Is there anything over at Public Health that could possibly fill your need? I haven't been over there for.
Well, and this plumbing project that's gonna happen, that needs funds, so. Yeah, so that was, and I'm not sure if there's anything else in the radar, because I had put, I had just. Put a hundred thousand into capital again, because it just seems like something, there's always a project, uh.
We have been.
To replace a project.
Those are needs that you have to have.
Right, we have to keep up on our buildings, you know, we have to keep up on that stuff, otherwise it really becomes quite the financial burden, so. Yeah.
If you ever, and Jeff wanna go over to Public Health to see what's going on, just give me a call and I'll kind of keep that moving a little bit.
Yeah, he was gonna try to, if he saw Kim, he was gonna talk to her again about. What maybe is in the old annex that they absolutely need to get out of there, just to encourage her to. Take some time and do that, um, expeditiously, so.
It's kind of a go once, go twice.
Yeah, so that way the cleanup can just be loaded in a truck, haul it to the landfill, loaded in a truck. If there's a couple of things that maybe need to be marketed to the public, let's get that done right away, let's take some pictures and get it on Facebook, and. People have responded very well to that kind of thing, and offered, you know, a minimal thing, as long as they come and retrieve the item.
Yeah.
We don't, aren't charging, uh, arm and a leg for things, just trying to get them off the.
It'll show better if it doesn't look like a hurricane just.
Absolutely, yes, that way the carpets can be cleaned if needed, maybe a, slinging a little paint if needed, that kind of stuff.
Oh, it came off the wall, so it's just, I did talk to Kim, uh, and tell her, and, and Karen and that group.
And I mean, I don't want her to feel like.
No, I, I know she's got a lot.
Hammering on her, yeah, she's got a lot going on, so.
I'll be glad to meet over there and see if I can.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, because if we could get started, that would be great, especially if there are photos to be taken, and we can start marketing a few things and get those off the. Off the books for the county and let the public have a chance at them.
You bet. Well, let's stay up, hold off on that, Ben.
Okay.
Perfect, till we know a little more and go from there. So up to citizens input. Penny, Cindy, go ahead.
Hi, I have like just two things this morning, first of all, when Kyle was talking about the interaction with the elderly and. The younger people, which is a fantastic idea, I do know that Unity Ridge sends their first graders to Gracewell. On a regular basis, I don't know if it's weekly or monthly, but they go over there for the afternoon, they play games, they read together, things like that. And it's well received by both sides, I, I don't know if the high school would do that, but I think that would be a fantastic idea if they could. Have some kind of a program, like what Ty was saying, just to spread that wisdom, and I think that. Both sides would take a lot of joy in it. Um, and then the second thing I had, I sent you an email about this pipeline amendment. That is going through, um, it's what Jean referred to last week, and it's kind of a very scary thing, because. It's an amendment proposed by U S Senator Tim Shealy of Montana, um, and it's on to the Pipeline Safety Act. And they're adding the language to the bill that says vandalizing, tampering with, disrupting the operation or construction of. Or preventing the operation or constructions, those are the words they want to add. And lawyers from, uh, the landowners, Sierra Club, Bull Alliance, Food and Water, state lawyers. Everyone's saying because it's such a broad statement, that basically we could be in trouble. I could be arrested right now for talking to you on Zoom about it, it's, it's kind of one of those bills that. They need to narrow it down to specific what, what it means, and they don't.
Yeah, good point.
That's a scary, scary thing, or thought there, Cindy.
It's the way it's written, yeah.
It's the way it's written, it's, it's, it's really, yeah, scary, I guess, is the word, but, um, in the email, I did put a, a phone number that. I would encourage everyone just to call in and just say, please look at this, and I do have to say, it came out yesterday that Ted Cruz. Did reduce the, um, prison time from eighteen years to three years, so, you know, how you wanna look at that. Still very scary, but.
Do you have the number of the bill and everything in there?
Yes, I do, there's a link to the bill.
Is it a Senate, it's on the Senate side?
Y- yes, yes, it's the.
First Amendment right, just so you can talk about it.
Right, yeah, that's what, the lawyers are saying, how it's written, it's so broad, that that could include that, if you get good lawyers, and then of. Course, you know, the ordinary citizen who gets wrapped up in it is not gonna be able to fight the big lawyers who have deep pockets. To prosecute something like this, so it's, it's just, like I said, very scary. They, they failed on their attempt to get the expedited permit through for the ten million dollars that got canceled, so now this is kind of the next step. And it was kind of interesting when we were at district court, um, with oral arguments last, oh, whenever that was, the tenth. Summit kind of made the mention of, they're waiting to see what happens in the federal, federal arena. So we're wondering if this is, because if this happens, we're basically done, I mean.
Yes.
So, anyway, I wanted to say that I sent that to y'all in email, and I would encourage you to make a phone call and.
We will.
Thanks, Cindy.
Thank you for that, always, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I was gonna bring up one thing, you know, when we were talking about, you know, um, folks being able to buy houses and the cost and so forth. Another thing that's been brought to my attention by some of my old, uh, mortgage lending buddies is that the taxes and insurance. For some houses are more than what the principal interest is these days, it used to be P I T I, and you didn't really, you know. Taxed insurance was just an add-on, but the insurance, especially for new first-time homeowners, that's the first time they've had that kind of insurance, so they honk them really hard. And the taxes, uh, that, there are times where that principal in, interest is less than the tax than insurance part of it. And that's something we can't control, and so combined with the high price of houses that need a lot of work. Uh, it really makes it difficult, so.
Good point, I've always said that, you know, insurance companies always saying they're not making any money. If you drive through any metropolitan that has a football stadium or something, it's a state farm field, they're making money.
Yeah, and you go to the cities and you see the mansions.
You don't need write-off if you're making money.
I just wanted to bring that up, that it's, it's a combination of all of the above, why it's so hard for young folks these days to get into a safety sanitary house.
Good point.
So, didn't want to not mention the other problem.
There's a way to re, rethink homeowners and property insurance, it would be a godsend to. Like a little cooperative amongst you and Tim, best friend, they're buying, you're only checking, don't make it together.
I mind you to that point.
Yeah.
It's gonna have to, because.
You can self-insure for the small things, but you're really self-insuring for the catastrophes, and so you're paying and.
Like everybody's stepped to that point, I mean.
Ten thousand dollars.
The very harvest, I called insurance company, I said, I don't know if I'm gonna turn this in yet.
That's exactly right, exactly.
I'm gonna let you know that's happened.
Yep, that's exactly right.
Soon as I give a estimate, I'll let you know if I'm gonna turn it in, if it's a major, yeah, but if it's mine, you know, it's under. Seems like now it's under ten thousand dollars, they don't even care anymore.
That's exactly, that's unfortunate, because what you pay a month for that coverage. Who's that worth twice now, scary, scary. Well, it is, I don't. Mom, you got something?
Good job, guys, keep up the good work, as always, very good job.
Thank you.
Good morning, Patty.
Good morning. Nice to see all of you, y'all looking good.
We're doing our best to keep your boy.
I heard Dave say somebody might be getting down to harvest pretty soon, he was gonna take you out to dinner or something.
You know, a good primary is always good, isn't it?
Escalated quick, didn't it?
God bless all of you.
Anything else?
Unless you guys had any more questions, uh, PMA, that's pretty much covered.
I'm most new during that. Make motion, we adjourn?
Second that.
All favor sent. So is, are any of you guys gonna come up to this, uh?
Well, you know, I'm like, there you go.
Well, we've already, you.
I'm gonna be on the road.
A lot, I will not, yeah, because we've already seen it, basically.
Well, we did, you know.